Good evening and welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for July 30th, 2018. Tonight's first order of business is we have a citation for the Greenleaf Garden Club on their 50 years of generous service to the community of Milford. So, I'd like to open up to my fellow board members first.
Sure. Yeah, for those who don't know, the Greenleaf Garden Club, I'd like to hear from the ladies because they can talk more intelligently than I can about all the things that they do for this community. But they've recently hit their 50-year anniversary. An incredible milestone. I know they work hard, people just think these things come together. And, you know, I had the opportunity to go to the flower show and see the arrangements and see the displays. And, very impressive that local people put together so much. And, you know, I've said it here and others have talked about it, how it's attention to the little things that bind a community and keep a community together. And I just wanted to be a part of something, and I'm glad that the Chair set up this meeting and this agenda so that we could congratulate you on your 50 years. What an outstanding achievement, and thank you very much. We know a lot goes into it, and on behalf of the community, we thank you.
Congratulations, ladies. Unfortunately, Lisa and I were out of town, so I missed having the chance to come by, but Bill did speak about it at a meeting, and he said it was quite the place to be. So, I apologize for that. A couple of you I've known for a very long time, and I would have liked to have been there. Congratulations, 50 years is quite a milestone. But, we've had you here before, and it's always a pleasure to see you, and I actually enjoy listening to you guys while you're congregating and getting ready to come into the meeting. So, thank you very much, and thanks for being here.
I'll open it up to you. Anybody would like to make a few comments? Tell us about the history or about what you do?
Sandra was the Chair for the Flower Show. She was the mainstay.
Just pull the mic, Sandra, a little closer. There you go.
Well, we started a long time ago, and Elaine McNanna, who's here, was one of the founders of the club.
That's what I thought.
And, we've grown rapidly, and we're happy with what we do for the town, as the planters go along Main Street, and we decorate the front of this building during Christmas. We do garden therapy at the nursing home countryside, and we provide all the materials with our fundraiser, which is in November. And, we usually have about 30 people at that. And, we just enjoy enhancing the town and each other's company, and share a love of horticulture and design. We thank you for inviting us.
Well, thank you for being here. And, you know, I'm a lucky guy, because I come out of Prairie Street every single morning, and right across the street from where I come out is a beautiful planting arrangement that you people take care of every single year. And, it amazes me, it's a dangerous job, because you're going to cross the intersection to get onto the island.
Sure is. You do it sometime at 9:00 o'clock at night.
I was pulling out tonight, and I looked at it, and I said, "What a beautiful, beautiful arrangement." It really, really is. And, all the work that you do around the community is really, really nice. I probably should have you at my house, I could use some flowers at my house. From the Board of Selectmen, we truly want to say thank you. We appreciate everything you do. I apologize as well, I couldn't make that night, I wish I could have. You know, if you have another event next year, you know, please let us know.
We have lots of pictures. I'll show you.
Again, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, we'd like to say thank you for all the hard work. It's almost like being an unsung hero. You know, people drive around Milford all day long, and they see all these beautiful arrangements, and they don't realize what it takes to put them there. You know? So, we say thank you, and I have a citation for you. I don't know who wants to accept it.
The outgoing President.
Do you have known that the Board of Selectmen hereby offer their congratulations to the Greenleaf Garden Club in recognition of your 50 years as a nonprofit organization founded in 1968, and we are for support of many civic development projects in the town of Milford. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Selectmen extend their very best wishes and express the hope for the future good, fortune, and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 30th day of July, 2018. Signed, Michael K. Walls, Chairman, William D. Buckley, and William E. Kincaid Jr.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much.
Can I open it up?
Yes.
And it's not upside down.
Thank you.
Nice job, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
I will. You too.
Good night. Good night, good night, good seeing you.
Thank you. Next agenda item is signing of the warrant.
I'll move Mr. Chairman to approve that warrant.
Second it.
Unanimous. Next agenda item is approval of the July 16, 2018 minutes.
Move Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to abstain.
That's right. And, I would make that unanimous. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here for invitation to speak? Come forward.
Go to the short mic.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us this time. We're here on behalf of a number of the town meeting members to talk about our disapproval of the way that Mr. Carroll was unappointed. We're concerned about the process, how it happened. We're concerned about, this seems to be a pattern, that people have been kind of blindsided, unappointed, dismissed without being on the agenda, being allowed to have an opportunity to defend themselves. And, we also are worried about...
We've been given guidance by counsel. So, the comments you're making...
Can I finish my statement?
The comments you're making are not 100% accurate. And, we're addressing this, the individual has counsel, he's represented by counsel.
It's too bad it's gotten to the point where we have to have counsel and spend money on this kind of, you know? I mean, it feels as though that...
We've been given guidance by counsel.
You can't speak on this, but I can.
Well, the only thing is, in order to correct accuracy, inaccuracies, and what may be a public perception, may not be 100% accurate. So, we're not allowed to respond to you. So, I'll tell you that already...
It feels uncomfortable not being able to defend yourself, though, doesn't it?
Already, some of the things that you've said were inaccurate.
It's not uncomfortable enough, we've been advised by legal counsel that we can't comment on it. So, it's not that we're uncomfortable that we can't comment.
So, the point of you saying this to me, you're telling me that I shouldn't be continuing with our letter, or...
No, I think it's up to the Chair to provide the guidance when to cut it off, if there's accuracy or inaccuracies in your comment, and not to...
Okay, then why don't I do this? Why don't I do this? Why don't I give you the letter?
Okay.
Okay? And, we're asking, from where we sit at this point, that Mr. Carroll be reappointed.
Okay.
So...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else here for invitation to speak? Next agenda item is scheduled appointments, and tonight we have a transfer of common vicula license for Sabor Latino Restaurant. How are you?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Identify yourself, please. My name is Giovanni Brito, and I'm taking ownership of Sabor Latino Restaurant. We're transferring the name over to myself.
So, let's see. So, you're looking for your hours of operation to be Monday through Thursday, from 5:00 a.m. in the morning till 11:00 p.m. at night?
Yes.
You're looking for Friday and Sunday, from 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, I'm just trying to remember.
That's okay. Okay, so from the building commissioner, allowable use, town planner, no actual change, tax collector, no outstanding taxes, town treasurer, outstanding tax liens, there are none, fire chief, no issues or concerns, police chief, no issues or concerns. With that, I would make for motion?
Yeah, just a few questions. Mr. Brito, what's your experience with restaurants?
It's mild experience, but the last owner is my cousin, so we're going to be working together.
Okay.
We're going to be staying, you know, we're going to be working together, so...
So, the former owner's going to be working with you to transition?
Yes.
Teach you the business, and...
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions. Good luck.
Thank you.
So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the license transfer as requested, and the hours of operation as stated on the application.
And I'll second that.
Unanimous. Congratulations.
Congratulations, good luck. Just work with the town administrator for anything further tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good night, sir. Okay, next agenda item is the interviews for the Human Resources Director. Our first interview was with Maureen Giffen. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening. Very good, thank you.
We'll open it up to you to give this little overview.
Sure. So, maureen, I grew up in Framingham, but I moved to Milford around 1985, and I stayed for about 15 years. So, very familiar with what the town has to offer and some of the challenges that it faces. My son went through the public schools here until we moved to Franklin, where I currently reside. I earned my bachelor's degree in education, and I was a substitute teacher in Metro West schools throughout the district. And, my career took an unexpected turn in dentistry for a number of years, before I eventually landed at EMC, where my resume picks up from there. So, I joined EMC in 1998 as an administrative assistant in the IT department. Loved the company, and thought if I was going to stay, HR might be the best place for me to be. I wanted to be as prepared as possible for an opening if it arrived, and so I enrolled in an HR master's program. And, not long after, I was offered a position as an HR coordinator. Soon after that, I got promoted to a generalist, and I knew HR was the right place for me to be. Over the years, I got promoted from generalist to senior generalist, HR manager to senior manager, and HR director to senior director. I supported all kinds of organizations, large and small, domestic and global. I supported or was responsible for employees at all levels of the organization, from hourly contract labor on the manufacturing floor, right up through some of the senior consultant engineers. And, I was an HR business partner to first-line supervisors, right up through some of the most senior leaders in the company. Fast forward to 2015, the HR director in Ireland stepped down from her role, and I was asked if I'd like to take an expat assignment. So, I packed my bags and I moved to Ireland.
Great study.
Great opportunity. I was supposed to be there for two or three years. Three months to the day after I arrived, Dell announced they were acquiring EMC, and everything changed, for sure. So, now I was responsible for 3,000 employees across 32 business units, and helping them deal with all the changes that were about to come. You can imagine two well-established corporations, over 70,000 employees in each one, trying to harmonize systems and policies and processes. It was a massive undertaking, for sure. And, not only were we working on all those operational changes, but that announcement put everyone sort of at a career crossroads. We were all wondering, would we like the new company? Would we have jobs? What were the redundancies? And, so I was doing a lot of coaching with managers on sort of leading through times of change, and also with employees on sort of future-proofing your career as best you could under those circumstances. And, I was facing the same thing. I knew my expat assignment was not due to finish until long after all the HR jobs were gone, so I didn't expect to have a job to come back to when I moved back home. I was surprised to get a call from one of the senior leaders at Dell HR, asking if I would come back and take my old role, supporting manufacturing, supply chain, and all those organizations on the EMC side, and the equivalent organizations on the Dell side. So, with a little hesitation, I accepted the role, and I was now responsible for 7,000 employees around the globe. My direct reports were in seven countries and two states. My HR business leadership team and my business leader were all out in Austin, Texas. They really wanted me to relocate, but I hadn't even come back from Ireland, and I was not prepared for another move quite so big. And, so I just decided I would take the job and have a lot of frequent flyer miles, for sure. So, I learned also that Dell had a very different business model. And, while I was on one of my trips flying from Shannon to Boston to Austin, back to Boston, and back to Shannon again, I really wondered if this was the right role for me. I knew that most of my work in this job, if I wasn't flying somewhere, was going to be through email and through conference calls. So, I did a lot of soul-searching and decided it wasn't the right role, it was time to leave. I offered to stay as long as they needed to help fill that role, so they asked me to stay for an additional quarter, which I did. Last May, I left, and I took the summer off to just kind of catch my breath and decide what was next for me. And, I ended up accepting a position. I wanted something that sort of, I wasn't one of 140,000 employees, and I wasn't supporting 7,000 employees that I would never even meet. I wanted to support 700 that I'd get to know, and sort of put the human back in human resources, where I had face-to-face conversations, I might be in the same time zone even. And, so I looked for a position like that. I accepted a role as a standalone HR director in a hotel, and I'm responsible for every aspect of HR, from posting the recs, the hiring, the onboarding, employee engagement, employee relations, everything right up through termination. And, aside from doing all the HR aspects, I also do payroll for the hotel. A little bit of a learning curve there, I never had done that before. But, it's really been a great experience for me. It sort of grounded me back in the fundamentals of HR, big change from what I had done before. But, it gave me exactly that engagement with the employees I was looking for.
Great. Well, thank you. Quite a career. I'll open the next discussion.
Yeah, it's, so...
Comments, I should say.
Based on the resume, it's no surprise that you're here. You're quite accomplished in your career, and I think I understand well the progression. Having been a part of a major corporation acquisition, it is time to reassess.
Exactly.
And, with two corporations like that, I can imagine there are a lot of redundancies, and companies want to pare down, and they want to make it cost-effective. And, so, unfortunately, where we are today, and, you know, the public sector and corporations, downsizing is the term of art, but it means that, you know, in searching for profits, people will be let go on big acquisitions. I have a few questions, and I apologize for this phone. Let me kill that. You know, I just, I guess, where to start? Why don't I start here? Why don't I, you know, not everything exists in a policy, not everything that HR will tackle or be challenged with, there'll be a clear policy that you follow. And, so what I wanted to hear was, when you're problem-solving, and there's no official guideline or policy, how do you, what's the process that you go through to problem-solve, to resolve the issue?
I think one of the things you have to do is make sure that you are getting as much detailed information about the current state as you can. Try to understand what problem you're trying to solve, what's the solution you're trying to achieve, and how you're going to get there. And, making sure that you engage with all the people who have a stake in that game. I was responsible for rolling out all kinds of initiatives that cross departments, that cross geographies in some case. And, you had to be so careful that what you did in one place didn't negatively create an impact somewhere else. It was really important that you made sure that everyone who's going to be involved or impacted by this, you understood what those implications were. And, certainly, you want to get all the buy-in from the right people, and the approvals, you know, make sure you're in compliance, you've met all the legal obligations, and then just what makes most sense for the organization. I know that sometimes there are hard, fast rules you need to follow, and other times there's guidelines that you put in place, and you have to decide sort of where those gray borders are.
Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, you start off with the right thing, map to where you want to go, and then involve the stakeholders, see if you can get there. That makes sense to me. You know, I wanted to ask a few questions, and if we're not going to bounce around, I'll ask that, you know, the HR director, you know that this is a first-off position for the town of Milford, and an HR director has a role in assisting both department heads and management, as well as the employees. Can you give me an application recently, or maybe not so recently, that sticks out in your career where you're having to balance those two needs? Employees have legitimate concerns, and department heads have a department to run and strategic objectives to meet. Can you help me?
I think that happens almost all the time. Certainly, in the corporate environment, it happened, because there are certain mandates from a business perspective that need to be rolled out. There are things that you have to put into place, they might not meet the needs of all the employees, and so there's that frustration level of, "I don't agree with that, and I don't want to do it that way." Anytime there's change, people can get a little more resistant to that. So, I think what you really need to do, for me, it's the more transparent you can be, helping people see it from another perspective. And, it's one of the things that I think I did most often, was to put yourself in the other person's shoes, and help explain where you can change, where there's some room for compromise, work with the parties. But, if it's a hard and fast rule, and it's something we have to just put in place, help explain why that's important. What's the reasoning behind why we need to do that? And, try to make the transition there as easy as possible.
Okay, and I'm going to give the other members time, I just want to make sure I don't steal all the time. Some of the municipal, state, federal laws that you have had to deal with and become trained on, can you talk about those a little bit?
I have not worked in the municipal environment, for sure, right?
Okay, so, no municipal, but there are state and federal laws that...
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, and I've actually been involved in discrimination cases, both in my current position at the hotel, and also back in my role at EMC. And, going in and making sure that we had managed all of the processes that needed to be done. I always try to get in on the front end of everything. You learn what those compliance mandates are, and so before you get to the point where you have to deal with those, you make sure that you're in compliance all the way through. And, just making sure that you are, everything from payroll issues to compliance in terms of work hours, pay for hourly employees versus salaried employees, all of those kinds of issues, you just want to make sure that you've got everything lined up and ready to go.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you for being here. I appreciate it. Obviously, this is a two-step process. You've already gone through interviews with both our finance director and our town administrator. So, you being qualified and everything like that isn't a concern of mine. The part that I most want to concentrate on with the final three candidates is, you're going to be the first HR director. What do you envision, and to me, I've been a state municipal employee for 22 years, if it doesn't bother me at all that you're coming from the private sector, or where you gain your experience from, but I guess initially, where would you see your first 30, 60, 90 days here being, because it's going to be yours to start from? Which I think is pretty exciting.
I do too.
I just know that, you know, that's why I like you saying that you wanted to get back to the human and the human resources, because, I mean, we're all here for you, so...
Absolutely. And, that's what appealed to me with this job in particular. So, I suspect after my first conversation, there's a lot of work that needs to be done already. So, step one is roll up your sleeves and get started on that kind of work. At the same time, I would want to meet with each of the department heads, with yourselves, with whoever's got sort of a vested interest in this role and the direction that it's going to go. The three of you agreeing that this is a position that was needed for the town, you must have a vision in mind of where you think those priorities are. I would also want to meet with each of the department heads, and really understand what their businesses do. What do the employees do in that? Do they have long-service employees who are close to retirement, and there's going to be a gap there? Do they have concerns that have been raised in the department, and they're not sure how? Do the managers need some coaching on how to deal with employee relations? I think if you go in and you meet with each of those departments, then you look for a thread that's common in between, and there's a good place to start, because you can bring the most value back. If everyone's got the same issue they're trying to resolve, there's a good place. I would also want to see if there's anything that needed sort of triaging right away. Is there anything that's been boiling that needs to be addressed? And, I think the third place where HR can add value that's not always recognized is on the prevention side. The more engagement you have with employees and with management, you get an early sense of where trouble's starting to rise, and where there's some problems that might need a little bit of help. And, I do think that if you tackle those on the front end, that prevention can be invaluable. If you solve that problem when it's still small, and prevent it from coming to something much larger, there's true value in that, and I think that's a piece that's not always recognized.
No, I appreciate that, because again, and I'm probably, again, on the far side of all the policies that my employees and I have had to read, acknowledge on an annual basis, semi-annual, whatever it is, and that's what I was very surprised about when I got on this board, that, you know, different departments, I think you'd be very impressed what our police officers receive on boarding, but other departments, because there's so many different fiefdoms, where some policies, besides benefits and some real, you know, topical stuff, and we don't sign a lot of things that I'm kind of very surprised about. So, not to make you a policy wonk as soon as you get here, but I think you're going to probably be surprised that a lot of that doesn't exist.
But, I think that's also an opportunity to go out and find out, because the HR right now appears that it's done in sort of a fractured way. There's some done here and some over there. There's no clear vision whether there's a consistent practice or policy throughout. One department might be doing it one way, and one might be doing it a different way. I think the other opportunity to, or one of the benefits from not coming from municipal, had I come from another town, I could probably easily replicate whatever I did there, put it into place, and we'd be... But, who's to say that that's really what's best for the town of Milford? Just because it worked in a different town doesn't necessarily mean it would work here. And, I think one of the other things that I bring, coming from a company like EMC, I learned benchmark-proven HR best practices. And, so I dealt with some really complicated, sensitive HR issues, and I rolled out large and small programs across numerous divisions. I navigated some really complex initiatives where there are a lot of moving parts. And, I might not never be required to do anything on that scale here, but you can draw from that, and I think that you bring a fresh perspective that says, "Hey, have you ever tried it this way? Have you thought about doing something different? Or, why do you do it that way? Is there a reason for it?" And, sometimes there is, it's a legal or a compliance issue, and other times, it's just, well, it's the way we always did it. And, so I think there's opportunity there then to revisit, and see if that's the best way to approach something.
Thank you very much.
I have to be honest with you, when I was reading your resume, very impressive, but the first question that came to me was, "Why?" And, I appreciate your honesty, explaining why you left the major, the big corporate world, and, you know, you wanted to get face-to-face with the employees instead of...
And, I loved it, and I'm so grateful that they saw that I was a fit for that role. But, the more I grew in my role, the further I got away from the people, which is the part that I really liked most about HR in the first place. And, so it was fun to be at that level, and to learn as much as I did, but I'm really glad to be back at this level.
So, a question that I have for you, and Will has made reference to it, this is a first for us in the town of Milford, and you know that as well.
Sure.
Tell us what some of your first plans are, if you were fortunate enough to receive the position, to moving forward, to getting our HR department online and moving with our employees.
I think the first part is that I've just got to learn kind of where we are now. I have no sense of what's being done where, so I think I would have to gather all of that, and sort of find all the parts that are being done, and how they're being done, and look to see where you could streamline, and either create efficiencies by just pulling them all into one place, or is there a way that we could just ensure fair and consistent practices across the board? I would, truly, without having a grounding of where it starts right now, that would be a good place for me to start.
Do you feel that not having any municipal experience is going to hinder you at all? Or, do you, no?
No, I think the core principles of HR are the same, whether you're in the private sector, or a municipal setting, or you're in a nonprofit for that matter, right? You want to find great, qualified people, get them hired, onboarded, trained, keep them engaged and productive, and make sure you take all their HR needs that are throughout their tenure, until they part ways. And, so how you do it is where there's a difference, and I think that's easily learned. That's understanding the rules and following process from there. So, I don't think that there's a learning curve, for sure. There are things that I won't know, but I think that's something that I could easily learn. I didn't know dentistry, I didn't know HR, and I didn't know payroll, but I tackled all of those as I went through my career, and those are the process things that I think that you can learn fairly quickly.
So, I want to give you an example of something that I talk about all the time, time, is that in the community, there are departments that punch on and punch off. And there are departments that use the honor system and somebody walks across the town hall with a timesheet and, and I used to always say, well, how do we know that? And being in the corporate side, you know, everything is, you know, done, everybody's punching in and out, you know, for liability reasons, for accountability. Give me an example of how you, how you would, I'm not asking to change the world tomorrow, but give me an example of how you would look at those processes and say, we need to, we need to make some changes here. It's, we're not criticizing anybody, but people need to be held accurately accountable.
And I think it's where you sort of started on the front end, is it's that liability piece, right? We do need to understand when someone's on property and when they're doing their job. If someone to be hurt on the job, you want to know whether they were still in their own time. So I think really starting out with where is there legal compliance issues? Where are there regulations? Where do you need hard, fast rules versus that gray? And in those kinds of situations, I would want to understand why that's not being done. If it's done inconsistently in other organizations, what's preventing this team? Is it just that they didn't know they were supposed to, or they didn't have access to do the, the punching? Or what is it? And if it's just a behavior, then you have to put something in place that says going forward, you do need to punch in and we need to hold folks accountable right up through the management.
Thank you. Thank you. Noah, you've answered a lot of the questions. Your background speaks for itself. And you've talked through your background to help me navigate some of the questions I might have looking at a piece of paper. So it was a pleasure getting to know you for the short time that we have. And it's no surprise why you're here.
Thank you.
Noah, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Very impressed.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I think this is a great opportunity, not just for whoever's selected, but for the town. I think there's great potential in how this role gets crafted and, you know, I, I think it's great that you guys recognize the need for this. So whoever it turns out, I thank you for the time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Have a nice day. You as well.
Thank you very much.
Great to meet you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Hey, Sinead.
Bill Buckley. Great to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Will Kincaid. Nice to meet you.
This one right here?
Right there, yeah.
Good evening. How are you?
Fine. How about yourself?
I'm good, thank you. I'm good. How do you pronounce your last name?
Hotemory.
Okay. I was close, Rick.
You did well. You're better than I get.
Go right ahead.
Great. So do you want me to tell you a little bit about myself? Okay, great. So I have over 15 years of experience in the HR field. I've worked for several different industries, mostly in high tech. I had a contract position at Bose and I've worked in, with benefits, with compensation, employee relations, HRIS, pretty much the gamut of kind of an HR generalist type position. I've been an HR manager at Corion, which was my initial company that I worked at for 15 years. Then I went to Simplivity. That company was acquired. There I was global benefits manager and comp manager. And then I moved on to Bose where I was in retail and working as a contractor.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Welcome, welcome to, to this application process and I thank you for being here. You know, in your resume, you talked about global compliance statutory laws and regulations. And in, in this role, we have a fair amount of compliance requirements. We're not exempt from state and federal laws. And, and so I just want to see, I guess, have you applied some of those? And talk to me about what you see are some of the state and federal law compliances, compliance requirements in Massachusetts and, and what you might see here in a municipality.
Right. So at both of my companies, I basically set up the employee handbook. At Simplivity, it was a global company. Corion was as well, but Simplivity was in 25 different countries. And so we had to make sure that, obviously in the US, but also in the different countries, that we were in compliance with their statutory requirements as well as compensation, benefits, and legal. So what I've done is I'm a SHRM member. I'm certified, certified professional through SHRM. And so I get a lot of my information from them. I also, at one of my companies, we had Expert HR, which is another avenue that you can go to for compliance. And the way we, we stay compliant, obviously in Massachusetts, there's a lot of things going on with the pay equity that just rolled out. That's huge for Massachusetts, obviously. And I'm sure that's going to be throughout all the states eventually. And there's sexual harassment policies actually that are going to affect in the fall in other states. And so basically, I just kind of keep up to date on stuff and make sure that the handbook is constantly looked at, that the biggest thing is to communicate with the managers and communicate with the staff members to make sure that they understand how to be in compliance. The big thing for me at my other companies was the whole interviewing process, you know, kind of ironically, but to have hiring managers, not just recruiters, understand what they can and can't ask during an interview process. You know, obviously these days with everything going on, it's a lot more critical that they understand that if people, people that they're interviewing actually lend information to them that may not be in compliance, that they don't take notes, they don't write it down, they don't talk about it, they just let it go and say, go to HR and talk to HR about that. So, you know, it's, it's pretty much state by state. You know, I know here, it's a town, it's a government, so it's more Massachusetts rules that.
So it's, I just want to get a summary because there's the interviewing process and how to onboard, what you have to do to make fair decisions and somebody who's applying for a position. What, what other types of laws? I'm, I'm thinking about the direction you might help department heads with beyond onboarding. So if we go from onboarding and interviewing to what other types of fair practice do you see that's heavily, has have, have heavy compliance components to it?
Regards to like interviewing people, like having.
No, no. I've, I've got that as an example. I'm just looking for, you know, a summary of the types of laws you've had to deal with.
So sexual harassment, we've done training. I've done training in sexual harassment on compensation. Like I said, obviously pay equity, but in regards to just compensation alone, just making sure that people are getting paid for what their job is, not really the whole, you know, gender equality only, but making sure that if they have a title, that their title complies with whatever the compensation is. In previous companies, corporate companies, we've used ranges. So we've had pay scales. And then when they get to a certain point and they're promoted, we have to make sure that they go to the next level if that's where they need to be. A lot around benefits is like big in compliance too, to make sure that people understand what benefits they're eligible for.
Family Leave Act.
And Family Leave Act, all the ADA stuff, you know, ACA, the EEOC. I mean, there's a lot of different compliance measures that have to follow after someone is hired. But a lot of times, you know, I don't, I'll say, I don't know how it exactly works here in the town, but I know in other corporations that I've worked at, a lot of that falls on the HR department. And it's not a lot, like a lot of times the managers will say, okay, this person has to go out on leave because they have a medical issue or their spouse has a medical issue, partner has a medical issue. But then they kind of bring it over to the HR department. And then potentially, you hope not, but it can lead into an employee relations issue too. Depending on if the person doesn't want to take leave or if it's a paid leave potentially, they go out on short-term disability. And in most cases, short-term disability is a percentage of your pay. So some people don't want that, don't want to have a reduction in their pay. So it kind of is, you know, it's a kind of domino effect. It kind of can lead to more avenues of ER issues than, you know, you started out like this is all to be in compliance, but then potentially it doesn't go that way.
So you mentioned part of solution, delivering solutions is also training. And you mentioned, for example, sexual harassment training. Are there other training programs you've been involved in compliance change management where you had a lot to communicate at a given time and had to have folks understand it?
I mean, I haven't been involved with training other than sexual harassment, open enrollment, you know, making sure people are compliant. But I have done some organizational development, not as far as training goes, but as far as different departments where we have employees that want to move to the next level. Like I'll give you a, for instance, in our sales department, one of my companies, we had four different levels. So the bottom level was an ISR, inside sales rep. And so that person, to try to understand how that person can move to the next level, which was a business development rep, we had to speak to their manager and have their manager understand what goals had to be set for that person to get to that level. And then to get to the next level, which was a regional sales manager. So it wasn't training as far as a full scope organizational training, it was more departmental training.
You know, one question I want to try to be consistent, I was just leveraging one of the, one of the comments you made, but I want to try to be consistent with the types of questions I ask. And I want to ask a question about the process you use for problem solving. When guidelines and policies don't always exist to handle that particular situation, there may be a conflict between a department head and employee base, you know, what's your problem solving process? Describe that for me.
So usually I go and I try to understand from both perspectives what the problem is. So if it's an employee-manager problem, then I'll go to the employee and talk with the employee and try to figure out what the issue is. Then I'll go to the manager. And then usually what I try to do is get all of us to meet together. And I usually, in the past, I've also gotten my manager involved to try to get them to understand what's going on. And to try to figure out, like, is it really a problem or is it something that they want to agree to disagree on? You know, sometimes I've found in the past that a manager will come and say, there's a huge problem with this employee. And then when I start digging into it, it's not really a problem with the employee, sometimes it's a problem with the manager.
Sure.
And so I don't really like to have a conversation with two people together that are having the issues. I like to have it separately and try to digest what's going on and then bring everyone together and have us all understand that what actually is the problem. And if it's something that needs to be solved, it depends on what it is. So if it's someone, an employee that's not happy with their manager for whatever reason, they just don't get along, then we have to do, as you mentioned, like going back to your training, we have to do some sort of training to try to figure out why. Like is it, does the manager need some coaching on how to be a manager? Does employee need some issues on how to get along with other people? You know, we don't all have to be friends, but in a situation, we all have to get along. And if they can't do that, then we have to take the next step, which could potentially be, this may not be the right fit for you here. So.
Okay. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for being here. Welcome. I'm generally very consistent too with all the candidates that, that come by and my, my main point of interest, so to speak, is the fact that whoever we hire is going to be the first HR director in the town of Milford. And if you just let me know what, how you envision or what you think your first 30, 60, 90 days might look like here when you get welcomed and they show you where your computer is and your desk is and your office and, you know, where, where do you go from there? Because you'd be starting fresh and, and taking us in a new direction.
So the first place I would start is discovery and finding out who's on the team. And I noticed from the website that you do have benefit people, personnel. So I would first go to them because they are part of kind of the HR group and try to figure out what their needs are and what they would like to do going forward. Like, you know, is everything you have, like, do you have all the tools in your toolbox or is there more stuff that you need? Then after that, I would then go more to the staff, like whoever I would be reporting to and whoever would be my peers. I would meet individually with them and try to figure out what next steps are that they need and explain what I, what value I can add. And I have a lot of experience, so I feel that I could bring a lot to the table. But I don't want to come in and just say, this is what I think we need because, like you said, it's a new position and I want to make sure that the position is welcomed, not just a person welcomed, but the position is welcomed into the fold. And so then what I would do is basically construct all of that in my head. And then moving forward, I would take like kind of baby steps initially to try to figure out, like, do you have an employee handbook that's up to date? Let me look at it. Let me make sure that it's in compliance. Let me make sure that you have everything you need. And then bring it forth to all the people that, you know, or not all, but maybe some of the people that I met with to make sure that they feel what I did is what they're looking for. And then moving forward, I would continue on that path and look and see like what kind of systems you have, you know, maybe depending on the systems, maybe do an RFP if we need to go out and look at other systems that may be better or may just be more encompassing to the needs of the organization. And then I would present my findings to whoever the position is reporting to. I would tell them, you know, over the past 60 days, this is what I found, this is what's lacking, this is what we need, this is what I suggest. And then moving forward, hopefully we're all in agreement with it. And I, you know, it's not even the 30, 60, 90, but my methodology is that I continue to want to partner and be collaborative with others. So it doesn't end at like three months that I kind of like wrap it up and I'm like, okay, good, I'm good. I can go on and, and be myself now. I, you know, I've always worked with like a team and I've always wanted to have other people be part of the team. So, I mean, everyone can learn from everyone, you know, it doesn't matter what your position is, whether you're more junior or more senior. And that's really how I, I kind of handle like my first day, whether it's a new position or an existing position, that's kind of how I approach it.
No, I appreciate that because I, I think, you know, to what level, you're aware of this, but we were, you know, we're kind of behind the eight ball when it comes to a lot of policies and, and things that we train and educate our, our staff on. You know, I think different departments have handled it differently because it's a town, there's different fiefdoms and different levels of authority and responsibility. But as I told the former candidate, you know, being a, being a public employee for the last 22 years, you know, we have a lot of policies and a lot of acknowledgements to make and we're held accountable to everything we acknowledge and we sign and, you know, you hope that everyone reads and takes seriously. I don't think we have been, we are not at that level. So I think, I just want to be made comfortable that, you know, you're going to be able to find out very quickly where we're at. And then I think you're going to be, you know, quite busy just going in that direction. And I, I guess, how would you, I mean, how do you even start that when it comes to, you know, looking for best practices and things of that nature? I know you mentioned you have resources, you have organizations you belong to.
Right. I have a lot of resources. I have a lot of organizations. I am still really close with a lot of the brokers that I've dealt with in the past at other organizations that have always given me information. I go to conferences, I go to seminars. So I do have a lot at my fingertips that I can look at and react to. And I also think I would, you know, if possible, look at what other towns are doing and what makes people successful at other towns or other corporations and kind of mirror it to what you currently have now and then take that to the next step. And once again, it's not like giant leaps forward. You know, if, if you're starting kind of maybe from scratch, then you have to take steps. And obviously there's budgets involved and so you have to consider everything. It's not just, oh, these systems look wonderful, let's just buy everything and hope that everything works. And, and it takes a long time. I mean, I personally at Corion put together an HRIS system and I pretty much did it on my own. I spent my weekends doing it. I went to ADP and Waltham when they were there for training. So, and it was a year-long process. And even after a year, it still wasn't perfect. We rolled out open enrollment at a pilot, as a pilot program and, you know, that's kind of the key too. You, you roll it out slowly so that people can adjust to it. And ironically, it was the CEO and the CFO that were kind of like, we don't want to do this. And I said, no, you guys have to be the ones that accept it because then everyone else will. And that's the other thing, you have to get acceptance from the top down. And if you don't, then a lot of times, things don't work.
You're absolutely right. Noah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Having been with a company for 28 years and three years ago going through some serious sexual harassment training, to me, one of the interesting things is people think of the word sexual and it's, it's, it's so much broader than that. It's proper termination, it's how do you address an employee properly, how do you handle a situation properly?
handle a situation properly? So tell me how you would come into a community like Milford with all the different departments? And how would you introduce sexual harassment training?
So I think first what you have to do is, like you said, you have to have people understand what it is. And like you said, it's not just sexual harassment. It's a lot more. And so I think initially, once again, you have to take, if people haven't had it before, I mean, everyone's heard of it, especially these days. But if you actually haven't had the sexual harassment training, I think what I would do is I would do a very short PowerPoint presentation, maybe like three or four slides. Because once you get beyond that, you've already lost everyone. And I would explain what it actually is. And basically, I, you know, it could be, I mean, this actually happened at one of my companies, it could be a calendar on the wall that someone's offended by. You know, it could be something sexual, but no one has said a word. They just keep walking by this calendar and looking at it thinking like, oh, my gosh, I'm offended by it. So I think the best thing to do is like, once, once again, just do the PowerPoint slides and give examples. I think that's the key for people to understand, like, real world examples. A lot of the training that I've seen is just stuff like, like you said, words. And people just don't associate it with what it actually is. You know, it could be someone talking, you know, in a kitchen or in a bathroom about something and someone walks in and they think, oh, my gosh, that just offended me. But they don't know where to go. That's the other thing. And they, a lot of times, they bottle it up and they get so upset that they end up leaving because they feel like they have nowhere to turn. So I think the other key is to let them know that there are avenues they can go to to talk about it. You know, first, start with HR and then figure out who's offending you, what it is, and let them know that it's something that they should talk about. They're not going to lose their job if they tell someone, if they tell an HR person that, you know, their peer offended them, they're not, it's not like they're tattletaling. And I think sometimes people think that, too. Like, I don't want this person to lose their job because I'm saying something. So it's very much education is, is the key to having people understand what actually it is. And it's, it's, it's very in-depth and, like I said, sometimes people don't even realize that they're being, you know, sexually harassed.
And I think you make a valid point because people think that human resources is, is for the employees. It is, but it's also a great tool for managers or in our case, in the town of Milford, department heads. It's a resource for us to go to you and say, this is a situation that I have going on. And you have the ability to come back to that department head and say, well, this is what you need to start doing. You need to have documentation, you know, have you, have you given a verbal warning first? The second position will be a written warning. So it's also a tool for the department heads or managers in a corporation to go to and say, hey, this is where I am. Because a lot of people don't realize, you just can't terminate somebody.
Right.
Or you're just setting yourself up for a giant lawsuit. So again, to Will's point, you know, this is a first for the town of Milford. Tell me what you think might be some of the obstacles that you would see coming in.
Just in general?
Yes.
So one of them, and it was actually going to be one of my questions, is basically, I guess I have to look and see why at this time you've decided to put an HR person in, you know, into place. And so I guess one of the obstacles would be that there's never been someone. And so I think when someone new, once again, whether it's a new position or existing position, when someone new comes in, everyone's like, oh, my gosh, everything's going to change. So I think one of the obstacles is to kind of settle people down and let them know, yes, things potentially will change, but it's going to change for the better. And so I, I think it's just getting creative and making sure they understand that we're all one, we're all a team, and that we're all going to work together to create, you know, a great environment and create a great culture. And so I think really the biggest obstacle is trying to establish that, trying to establish myself as a leader, but also as a peer and an advisor.
And one last question. How would you handle setting up meetings with, your first meetings with department heads, all the different, you know, you have your fire chief, police chief, your highway department, you know, all the different departments in the community? How would you, how would you go about setting up those, those meetings with those department heads?
Well, I think in the case of those, I think I would actually have to just go there. You know, basically, call them, email them, however they communicate. And I know it's very different than corporate where, you know, a lot of people are right there and everyone's on email all the time where I'm sure they're not. They're kind of in the field, on the road, you know, dealing with their, their people. And I think I would just set up a time and say, I'm going to come over and we're going to have a 30-minute chat about what my department can do to help you, to assist you, to make life better for you and for your employees. And it's also, I know, like, in the past, what I've done, and like I said, it's a little bit different in corporate, I've set up meetings with all the department heads during their staff meetings. So I kind of sit in the back, you know, introduce myself, then sit in the back and don't say anything until the end. And then say, is there anything that anyone would like to share with me about the department, about how you're doing? And then on an individual basis, you can come see me if there's stuff that you don't want to share as a group. So, but in, in the case that you're mentioning, I think it's easier just to go to their locations.
And one final question I have, and then I'll open it back up to my fellow members. You're going to have employees that are union and employees that are non-union. How would you handle those two situations?
So I'll be honest, I've, I've never worked with union employees, but I know about them. I know that they have very strict guidelines and they're under kind of the union rules. So I, it's, it's a very different animal, basically. I mean, employees you can kind of deal with because they understand that it's part, they're part of the town and they're, and all the compliance and all the laws are part of, are for them. But the union employees, there's usually union negotiations that happen. So I think it would just be, I mean, for me, I'll be honest, it'll be a learning experience to have to deal with union employees, you know, through their negotiator. And, and I have friends that work at unions and I have friends that are part of unions, so I know a little bit about it, but I personally have never worked with union employees.
Thank you. Thank you. No, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions and hoping that we give the candidate an opportunity to close.
Sure. So thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's time. And I do have a couple of questions, if that's okay? So it was, one of the questions I had was, why at this time are you thinking about hiring an HR director, you know, head to head up the department? Because I know it is a new position, as you've mentioned a couple of times.
Sure. I've only been on the board three years. It was being talked about that even quite a few years ago. I've been a town meeting member for over 20 years and it's something that has come up over the last, at least the last six or eight that I remember. And I think it's just a matter of the size that we are, the number of employees that we have. And quite honestly, we had an all-department head meeting and they actually asked for kind of a common resource that they could go to as well as, as well as employees could go to. And then we started asking about policies and our town administrator, who wears a thousand hats, also can't be expected to be the HR director. And he put together a whole list of policies that we're in need of, but, you know, quite honestly, everything that we put on him, he can't all of a sudden become an expert in human resources. So, and again, someone from, from my vantage point couldn't even imagine that we didn't have someone with hundreds of employees, at least a resource that, that people could go to and you're making sure that people are getting trained and doing all that. I have 125 employees, excuse me, and, you know, that's a fraction of what the number of employees we have here in Milford. And the fact of what, how, what they're held to and what they're held to and responsible for, for just simply acknowledging and receiving policies and agreeing that if you work here, this is the behavior you have to exhibit and the respect you have to show. Never mind getting into a lot more serious and personal issues that generally an HR person I know has been great, has been of great assistance to me. And I just think that that should be another tool that, that our managers have in their toolbox. It's just, like I say, it's just, it's taken, as things do in government, it's taken quite a long time just to get there. People pushed back, people thought there were ulterior motives, people thought there were all these different things. And the fact is, where else do you go where there's 600 employees and there's not an HR person?
Right.
And I think it was a couple of members, even of the personnel board, that said, maybe it's time we start to look at this in, in creation of an HR. The easiest way to answer your question is it's time. It's a $100 million corporation. You know, and one of the things that I talk about all the time is that when you're a manager or you're a department head, just uses a very simple question, an employee comes to you and says, how many more personal days do I have left this year? Very simple question. As a department head, you know, you've got 5,000 things running through your head. And if you give the wrong answer, you know, so having a human resources department, you say, that's not a question you need to ask to me, you need to take the time to go to human resources and they have that information. What do I have for families, you know, sick leave? What do I, again, you've got a million things you're responsible for during the daytime. You're not going to have those answers. So be able to, and the employee to know that, hey, can I take 10 minutes? I just want to run over to human resources. I know I'm on vacation next week, I'd like to take Friday off before I leave, but I don't know if I have any more time coming. Simple things like that, say, you're better off to say, yeah, you know what, take the 10 minutes. Because if you make the wrong decision, it could be costly. So the, the easiest answer to your question is it's time. It's time for us.
Okay. And then just one other quick question. So what type of candidate, just in general terms, are you looking for, for this position? Since it is a new position, I'm sure you kind of have in your mind someone, like, what type of skill sets and?
Well, to be honest with you, I mean, I said this earlier to the, to the prior candidate, that, you know, you've already been vetted, you've already gone through your first round of interviews with our finance director and our town administrator, who you're going to be working with every day. This is more for us to make sure that, that we're comfortable with the person as well and really just to finalize the overall decision, both legally as well as, you know, it's, it's our responsibility here in a town form of government. But you've already, you've made it here because the two professionals have already, have already deemed you qualified and everything. So now it's just to, to figure out, you know, well, I guess what the nuances are. But again, the, the three folks that we're interviewing tonight, just on paper and now in hearing you and your experience, I mean, are all very qualified.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, to answer that question, for me, I'm looking for a senior HR person who's accomplished in that role. I'm looking for somebody who has the ability to bring best practices, whether it be from municipal, federal, state, or private sector. The laws are the same. The nuances of HR can be, HR can be significant in municipality because of some of the things you talked, talked about in terms of union. And I'm, I'm looking for somebody that can help further a culture. You know, the, the old saying that a culture is going to develop in a building or a business, whether management participates in it or not. And the question for HR and the question for department heads is to what extent do they want to influence that culture and put their fingerprint on it? And to create an environment, a positive working environment where folks understand the rules? Because my, my general rule is that I believe people come to work every day to do a great job. And that usually when people run afoul, it's not because it's, it's necessarily known to them where the parameters are. And then the other thing is, I think there are going to be change management opportunities. HR people are usually good at new strategic initiatives, at helping move a culture from one maybe bad practice or to an improved practice. And, you know, and there are cases where, you know, we have department heads who are elected who have no prior management experience. And, you know, a lot of times, I think it's simply about correcting behavior, not talking about a progressive discipline problem that has to end at termination, but it's really about correcting behavior. Right? So if, if there are long lunches, you correct that behavior and the person's performing well when they're here, as an example, it's just about correcting the behavior. It doesn't have to necessarily always end with progressive discipline to the seventh step or whatever. So changing the culture, working with the culture, influencing the culture, and somebody with seasoned HR skill sets that can bring best practice to this organization and to this municipality is what I'm looking for.
Great.
To me, it's credentials which you have, experience which you have. Bill makes reference to culture. I'm going to call it personalities, many, many, many different personalities. And you're going to have to, you're going to have to bring in some best practices. And you're going to have to have the ability to explain to them, this is why we're going in this direction. You may not agree, you may not agree with me, but give me some time. Sometimes you're going to have to say, this is just the way it is. But sometimes you're going to have, just have to say, just give me some time. Give me 90 days, let's look at it, but this is, this is the direction we're going in. You know, to make matters even worse is, I was just thinking about this, then come the summertime, we dump all the part-time employees in, on you that we bring in for the parks department.
Seasonal, yeah.
Yeah, seasonal help. So now you've got all them, you know, they get out of, most cases, they're college students. So they come home in May and then all of a sudden, you know, if you're lucky enough to be that person, they're going to be knocking on your door saying, I'm starting in two weeks and I'm at the pool, I'm in the parks department, I'm in community use, I'm here, I'm there, I'm there. And so you're going to have that. So it's a many, many different personalities that you're going to have. And I know you've worked in big corporations, so you understand that. But just to, because it's a first time job or a position for the town of Milford, you're going to have to get everybody to buy into it. That's, that's what I see. So, and again, on the behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I want to say thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Giving us the opportunity to interview.
Great. Thank you very much for your time.
Great to meet you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good, thank you. Good. Welcome to the Selectmen's meeting and we'll let you open it up.
My name is Dave Wiggins. I met with Richard a few weeks ago and talked about the new position here. Sounds very interesting, very challenging, pretty exciting, actually, for an HR person to build things from the ground up. I have the experience to build things from the ground up. I have 29 years in HR. I started out as a specialist in compensation. And then through a series of promotions, worked my way to a generalist, generals positions. I've, I've been in management almost my entire career. And most recently, I have a team of five employees doing compensation benefits and front-end payroll for a global company.
Okay. Well, I'll open it up to you. Great to see you here, David, and a pleasure having you. Resume is impressive and sees progression, it shows the progression in your career and experience. So I guess, you know, municipalities aren't exempt from state and federal laws.
Right.
And so I want to get a sense is, you know, what types of compliance and laws are you specifically had, had experience with? And which of those do you think apply to municipality as, as well?
I've had a lot of experience with ERISA laws relative to pension plans, so I've done a lot of that. We have the new Massachusetts Equal Pay Act coming up, so that's on everyone's radar, I think. And then compliance with ADA, FMLA, experience with that. But really, you know, in, in terms of employment law, right to work, things like that, I'm pretty familiar with just about everything. Not an expert at everything, but I would say particularly it would be, benefits would be what I'm most familiar with.
Okay.
Oh, and I don't think I answered your questions, how it would apply to municipality, but I, I think the equal pay law, for sure, that's going to have to be looked at from a compensation perspective, total remuneration perspective for employees, for the, for the 200 or so employees that this position will be, be dealing with. And again, the, the leave, leave laws, family medical leave and, and paid medical leave that's now going to be, be a law in 2019.
And I'm thinking about processes, a lot of times, you know, we hope that every issue that we deal with has a policy and has a guideline, but that's not, that's often not the case. It doesn't deal with the particular instance that the employee has or the, the department head has. And I'm wondering, what I'm trying to get a sense of is your, your process for problem solving. And if you have an example in mind, that's great, but what I'm thinking about-
perspective, total remuneration perspective for employees, for the, for the 200 or so employees that this position will be, be dealing with. And again, the leave, leave laws, family medical leave and paid medical leave, that's now going to be a law in 2019.
And I'm thinking about processes, a lot of times, you know, we hope that every issue that we deal with has a policy and has a guideline, but that's not, that's often not the case. It doesn't deal with the particular instance that the employee has or the department head has. And I'm wondering, what I'm trying to get a sense of is your, your process for problem solving. And if you have an example in mind, that's great. But what I'm thinking about is where policy and guideline doesn't exist, but you still have to solve a problem that employee, department head, whatever has. If you could help me...
Yeah, I've, I've had some experience dealing with that. In terms of, we had a policy or not a policy for paid time off for volunteer firefighting. It had, it had been sort of developed over time and it was an accepted practice in one of the, in one of the locations. But there was really no way for the company to track it, and some managers handled it differently from others. When it came across my desk, it was, it was a pay issue and whether or not those hours that were paid hours towards volunteer firefighting training would count towards overtime. And I think consistency is really, is very, very important when you're dealing with, with an issue that might not have a policy or all the i's dotted and t's crossed. And you're absolutely right, that we run across that a lot in the HR business because it's very difficult to keep things up to date. And especially when, you know, the culture of the organization, I worked for a family-owned company or a family-run company, and there, you know, it's sort of tribal knowledge and tribal practices get passed down and passed down, and then they, they get changed around. But, but that's the example that I, that I would...
Yeah, the problem with the ones that aren't written down is there tends to be a lot of human glue holding them together, and they tend to morph over the years.
Right.
Depending on the employee, the situation, the department head, any application.
Right.
Okay. So, so, you know, you look for consistency first, right? So you look for similar situations, I'm guessing, in terms of salary, where there's nothing in the policy for this?
Right. In terms of this particular instance, we, you know, we did have an overtime policy and non-work hours did count towards overtime. So it's just a really, you know, an application of similar principles. And so those hours were counted as, as, towards overtime.
Well, we've talked about the laws, we've talked about some of the laws you've had an opportunity to apply, practically apply. You've given me a sense of your process if a guideline or policy doesn't exist. And the last one is, how do you see, especially in the creation of a new position, how do you see that HR having influence on the culture, organizational culture, and affecting change?
Yeah, organizational culture is, is very interesting and, you know, each, each company, each municipality, each organization, what have you, they do have different cultures and, and different, a different readiness for change or to, to accept change. So I think that you have to first learn the lay of the land and, and maybe collect the tribal knowledge. If there, if there are any existing policies, if there are any practices that, that are recognized, you would have to collect that and then make a determination whether or not it needs to actually be a policy or does it need to be, you know, part of a manager's handbook or, or an employee handbook? And then use best practices in industry to perhaps draft a, a policy or, or a process or a procedure and then vet it with the senior managers, with the Board of Selectmen, and change it as necessary. And then it's just a matter of getting it out. And I, you know, we can do that in many different ways. We have, you know, email, of course, that's probably the most obvious, but maybe not the, the most effective. Staff meetings, team meetings, you know, huddles in the morning where you can disseminate that type of information. But I think it's really important to, to learn the culture of the organization and how things run, to determine how, how best to roll it out and apply it.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. Welcome, David. Thank you for being here. As I've said to the former two candidates that we interviewed tonight, you've already gone through the first step of the process with the town administrator and the, and the finance manager, and those are, obviously are two professionals that you'd be working with on a, on a daily basis. So I know you're qualified, I don't doubt that. Obviously, it's on paper and what we got in a memo form from, from Rick. But since you will be the first HR director here in the town of Milford, how do you envision your first 30, 60, 90 days and moving forward? And, and how you think you, you know, once you know, you know, how to access the building and get into your office, where do you go from there?
You know, I was going to ask you what you, what this position, what the duties would look like or what you would want it to accomplish in the first 30, 60, and 90 days. But I think first and foremost, it would be, you know, learning the organization. You know, there's an organization, there's a hierarchy, there's a way of, of getting things done here. And so you'd really, I'd, I'd really take the opportunity to learn from Rick and, and other leaders in, in the, in the municipality about how things work and why they work the way they do. I think I would go about documenting procedures, processes, talking to people, seeing what is working well, what is not working well. And again, use the industry best practices to draft policies for review by, by the leadership.
Because we have and have had our benefits folks here, you know, it's not like the HR department that, that I experience where benefits is one part and it all comes under, you know, one HR, one HR director. You know, you're kind of going to be, you know, you're going to be your, a one, a one-person show, one-man show in your case to, to, you know, to get here and, and do the things that you just talked about initially. But I guess, you know, some of the things that, that, you know, town government makes it different is, rather than even city form of government, is there's all different fiefdoms, there's different boards with their own legal authority underneath. But collectively, there's hundreds of employees in this town. I guess how would, you know, how would you want to, you know, bring yourself forward to, to all of these different folks and all of these different, different fiefdoms really to, you know, to try to get, you know, a single core message, whether it's training, policy acknowledgement, things of that nature to, you know, to across the, across the board?
Well, I think there's nothing better than one-on-one meetings. Or, again, or if there are meetings of collective bargaining unit heads, I would absolutely want to attend them to, just to meet the people and, you know, talk to them and see what their expectations are or what their issues might be. But one-on-one meetings would be great, just meeting with each of the leaders, you know, and I'm sure you, 24/7. So, you know, different shifts, I've, you know, I've done it all. We've a 24/7 operation where I come from. So we meet with, with the team leaders and, and talk to them and just sort of, you know, get a feel of how things work.
Great. Thank you, David. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here, David.
Sure.
You made reference earlier to consistency. And as you know, this is a first for us in the town of Milford.
Right.
How would you go about bringing consistency into the different departments, with the department heads? Because you, you can call them manager, managers or department heads, but how would you go about setting up practices that would help bring consistency to decisions that are being made on a daily basis?
So I think it's a matter of first establishing a dialogue with all of the leaders. And, and really, it's an educational process. I don't think it could, you know, processes or procedures, it wouldn't be successful if they were dictated by Human Resources or by anyone, really. So I think you have to get buy-in. And, and in order to do that, you have to have, establish a dialogue and, and keep the dialogue going. And I don't, again, you know, I don't know if there are management meetings, but I would surely welcome the opportunity to, to speak, to put forth issues, to, you know, just put trial balloons out there and kick them around and see what the reaction is to a policy or a procedure or maybe, you know, a new regulation, just to make people aware of it. So, so they can start to intuit how that's going to affect their department or their operation.
Thank you. And I appreciate your comment you made earlier too about a 24-hour operation. The community runs 24 hours a day, and there are going to be people in multiple shifts that are going to want, or at some point, if they can't meet with you during the day, they're going to want to meet with you when they're on their shift.
Absolutely. And I think it's important. I mean, you know, Human Resources is a service organization first and foremost, and every employee in the municipality would be the customer of this particular position. So you have to go where your customers are. And if that's, you know, 2 o'clock, 2:00 AM and, you know, on, on someone's break, then that's what it needs to be.
Tell me your take on, on the importance of training for sexual harassment.
I think training for sexual harassment, bullying, intimidation, and just general harassment is probably one of the most important, important things that an HR department can do and should do and must do. I have zero tolerance for any, any type of sexual harassment, harassment, bullying. I have terminated senior leaders for those, for violating those particular policies. So again, I think it's making people aware of it, establishing a dialogue, getting up in front of people, training them, talking about it on an annual basis, on an ongoing basis, and then making yourself available. So if people do have questions, if managers are not sure of a situation, whether it constitutes harassment or some other thing, then you need to, you need to be there and talk to people about it.
And to leapfrog that question, a lot of people don't realize that Human Resources is not only a benefit to the manager, it's also a major benefit to the employee. So how would you get your message out there that this is a best practice? This is, this is where we want to be. This is the road we want to head down. How would you get that message out?
To, to the employees?
Yes.
Yeah, I think there are a number of creative ways you could do that. I mean, you could, you know, you could, I could stand up in front of a, you know, a classroom of people and, and talk to them. But I think really people need to be engaged in it. So they need to be engaged in the message. And you, you might do that through, you know, little teasers on email, or you might do it through some type of a contest, or maybe, you know, a breakfast or an, or an ice cream social in the afternoon to get employees, you know, collected in one place and talk to them about an issue or about, you know, a new process that you're introducing, a new benefit or, or, you know, a new policy. So I think there are a number of creative ways to do it. Emails or, you know, one-on-one, walking around, you know, shaking hands, introducing yourself. So a number of ways to do that.
Thank you. One last question. First, first time, first position. What do you feel some of the obstacles that you might be facing coming in the door?
You know, the new guy, for sure. You know, maybe some people don't like beards, maybe, you know, some people don't like the glasses, who knows? So there, there are going to be obstacles regardless of, of who you hire. But I think, again, talking to people, looking them in the eye, welcoming their suggestions, you know, trying to draw them out and what's working, you know, what are their expectations of HR? So it really, it's going to be a give and take and, and it's, some of it's probably going to, you know, be on the fly, you know, like kind of shoot from the hip type stuff in terms of engaging people. But I think, I think there will be some resistance, but once they learn that, you know, I'm, I'm not the, the ogre under the bridge or, you know, that I'm, I'm not here to make their lives miserable or to figure out a way to fire them or cut their salaries, I think they'll develop a comfort level. And, and they'll, hopefully, they will, they will seek me out with, with questions or, or suggestions.
Thank you. Bill?
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
No, nor do I. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you very much. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Great meeting you. Thank you. Good luck.
It's a pleasure. We can have that conversation now.
Discuss it. I'll open it up to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Rick and the candidates made this difficult. You know, I, I see, again, once again, I see why the candidates are here in front of us, all accomplished in their own right, all having different strengths and weaknesses, different skill sets, different personal experiences. This is never easy. It's not easy when I do it at work, it's not easy when I do it here in terms of appointments, and especially in a first position. But having said that, it nonetheless comes upon us to make difficult decisions, and I'm not afraid to do that. You know, I, I look at the backgrounds of the individual, individuals, and I hear the answers that were provided. And there was one candidate who, in my mind, stuck out just a little bit above the others. And when we talked about process, I understood process where the candidate was going, what we were trying to accomplish. I understood the, the concept of involving stakeholders. And I think the background that Maureen Griffin has as a senior HR professional at EMC. I think we're fortunate to have her in the pool. I think we're frankly fortunate to have all three candidates in the pool. But I think we're especially lucky to have Maureen Griffin's name in this pool and her experience. And for me, without making a motion, because I'm interested in what the others have, because it's not so significant, just because it's my view that, that I can't be swayed, that to me is the candidate that I'd have interest in furthering, but I'm interested in hearing what the other members of the board have to say.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Bill. I ranked them. Maureen was also my, my number one. I was impressed with all three. Again, I meant what I said, that they'd already been vetted and already initially interviewed with the people they're going to be working with, and these are the recommendations. So I was, I was very impressed. First, I always go through their resumes, make notes, and kind of rank them almost on paper. And then when you meet them, it's funny how things change and, and how things, and how things are presented. But I was impressed with all three. I think Maureen stood up, stood out a little bit more. I even kind of like how she, she got into the field of HR. She's got a very diverse background. She came across very confident and I think she could be a good match.
And not to mention the fact that her training and masters in human resource management, she didn't talk about getting into a field. She studied, was educated, made career decisions and career changes and life changes that took her there. And it's a diverse background, which I think also...
Yeah, and I will say this to you, Mr. Chairman, as well as Bill, and even to Rick. I was kind of taken aback that, out of all the applicants, that there were no public, public HR people that actually surfaced to us, whether through town or, or in government already. At first, I was initially surprised by that, that all three are coming from, from corporate America here. But again, very impressed. Nice job, Rick.
I think that when I picked up my packet on Friday and Rick and I sat together, Rick said, you're going, you're going to have a difficult time. And as I looked at everybody's resume over the weekend, the first thing that came to mind was, I, I looked at the background of some of these people and I said, particularly Maureen, I said, wow, wow. But for me, she hit the nail on the head tonight when she said that she needed to get back to taking care of people, is really what she was saying, is that she, she managed 7,000 people around the world all by computer, and she wanted to get back in the business of face-to-face. And that's what this job is going to be. This job is going to be on a daily basis, face-to-face. Every time you turn around, someone's going to be knocking on that door, have you got a minute? hit the nail on the head tonight when she said that she needed to get back to taking care of people, is really what she was saying, is that she managed 7,000 people around the world, all by computer, and she wanted to get back in the business of face-to-face. And that's what this job is going to be. This job is going to be, on a daily basis, face-to-face. Every time you turn around, someone's going to be knocking on that door if you've got a minute. And...
With the human back in, Human Resources.
Exactly, exactly. And I think when she gave that, that, even more, I should say, made that statement to me, you know, and also where she was in her life, and she was able to say, "I need to back up to go forward." And it's a personal decision. She's had the opportunity to live in Ireland, she's worked for EMC, she's held big jobs with a lot of responsibility. But deep down inside, she said that wasn't making her happy. What she wanted to do to make herself happy was to go back to what she enjoys doing, and that's taking care of people and giving people proper guidance in Human Resources. And the other two candidates, very, very qualified, but I have to agree with my two colleagues. I believe also that Maureen Griffin is the best candidate for the position.
Well, with that, you know, it's funny, because, you know, Will, you mentioned ranking candidates. I'll say that Maureen wasn't the number-one ranked candidate on paper. It was close, and they were all close. But I think that made the difference in the meeting face-to-face and the opportunity to ask questions. So, given where the board feels they are, I don't see anybody struggling with the decision. If people needed time, I'm prepared to make a motion to offer Maureen Griffin our HR Director's position, and I'll make that motion.
I'll gladly second it.
And I will make it unanimous.
It's obviously, from the board's perspective, it's obviously pending still a great deal more to do, right? It's pending negotiations and discussions regarding salary and where compensation comes in.
Right.
So, it's with that caveat, knowing there's more work to do. Rick, good luck.
Yeah.
Nice job, too.
Yeah, nice job. Okay, next agenda.
Did we finish the vote? I'm sorry.
Yes, unanimous.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I vote in favor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next agenda item is Town Administrator's report. Rick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to update on three items that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. One is the, pleased to report the repairs to the senior center have now been completed, both interior and exterior. I'm also very pleased to report that we received a check on Friday from the insurance company for the owner of the vehicle, which caused the damage in the amount of $34,400, and that represents 100% of the cost to the town for the repairs, if the board remembers the bid that was accepted. So I do want to commend Town Council Charles Body Jr. for his efforts in successfully resolving this claim, again, with 100% recovery for the town. I do want to update the board also on the Central Street demolition. I'm sure the board members know that one of the buildings has been taken down. There's a little bit of an issue with the second building. I guess there's a foundation cellar in there that was kind of unanticipated a little bit. So the foundation walls will need to be removed, and the cellar area will need to be filled. The Highway Department is going to work in conjunction with the Brighter Horizons, and Scotty and his crew will be providing processed materials to fill the area. We will then grade from the top of the parking lot to the sidewalk, both, one, to ensure safety, and in two, obviously, we want to deal with the issue of aesthetics, to make it, to look pleasing. And again, I'll keep the board updated on the progress of this work. And I want to thank Scotty for coming forward to help us out with that. An update on the streetlights. We're now more than halfway through. We've installed approximately 925 of the LED streetlights. This represents about 54% of the lights to be converted. Expected completion is hopefully by the end of October. So hopefully, that project will be completed. And then finally, I did receive a note from Jen Ward, Youth Center Director. They have received some significant donations that help make camp available for local youth in need. And she wanted to extend a nice thank you to the following donors: Milford Federal Bank, Milford Rotary Club, the Doug Flutie Foundation, Jay's Classic Barbershop Basketball Attorney, the Commerce Bank of Milford, Home Field Credit Union, and two Milford residents, Kimberly Gold and Cheryl Grady, and also the Milford National Bank and Trust Company. Jen also informed me that they received a $3,000 grant from the Greater Worcester Community Foundation and the Worcester County Food Bank Fund to end hunger. This will be used to purchase a mobile salad serving bar and a mobile electric hot food buffet table, to be used to serve nutritious foods, to program youths, as well as to youths and families taking part in the Youth Center's annual holiday dinners and events. So a great big thank you to all of those individuals, businesses. And Jen, nice job in collecting all of those. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, so, just a lot there, right? We look at Charles Body on the recovery, 100% recovery for the town, facing what was a legal driver driving a registered vehicle, having to go after the vehicle owner. Not insignificant that he was able to recover 100%. And we talk about aspects of this when we talk about, you know, safety, and we talk about, you know, funding. Funding is one aspect. I always want to go back to the incident, the fact that we could have very easily lost an employee in that process who ended up pinned against a desk. But I do want to congratulate Charles because our Town Council recovering 100%. He's not been here long, got to work fast, and it's not a small task, what he did. We should send a letter to Highway Surveyor Scott Crisafulli for helping us out with that, Phil. You know, he helps when he can, and he doesn't always have the budget to be able to help us, and it was much appreciated. It's right up the street from his headquarters, so I know he's just as interested in the rest of us. Again, great work getting to 54% on the streetlights. You've heard me rave about them. I've talked about that. They've improved our lighting and our quality of life, our feeling of safety in our neighborhoods, much improved. And, you know, the last thing, the generous donations of folks going to, I didn't want to talk about all of it, but you gave us so much. The generous donations to the Youth Center is not a better program that folks, if they would like to give, to help the youth, the community. And, you know, when you look at what they're doing with it, and we're talking about, you know, funding food, nutritious meals, we may not always recognize immediately in our neighborhood, to the right or to the left of us, they may always look fit. But there are people within our community, and young people, and children in our community, who aren't eating as well as they might, especially when school's out. And so, this may be their opportunity, and it's just a great program. They're dedicated to the youth of the community, and I see so many community members and businesses who are dedicated to the youth of our community. It's refreshing and it's heartwarming to see those types of donations and programs be able to be created through their generosity. So, that's all I have.
Well, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Rick, nice job. And, you know, a couple of things. I think it's so nice to see the Highway Department work in the community the way they do. I know that the steel guardrail at the Senior Center is coming down, and we're putting up a wooden one, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, yeah. They're going to help us with that, yes.
So that's, you know, that's great. To Bill's point, you know, thank you, Charles. Great job. When that incident first went down, we didn't think we were going to be able to do anything, because the driver of the vehicle wasn't the owner of the vehicle. We didn't know if the vehicle had insurance on it. So, you know, great job. Once again, the community makes out. To the Youth Center, having been the former chairman of the Milford Youth Center, I see the benefits that go on over there every single day. And as we know, one of the issues we deal with on a daily basis around the world, not just in the community of Milford, is the opioid crisis. And the Milford Youth Center is a place where children can go every day and try and figure things out. There are people that are there that work with them, to guide them, give them a safe environment. You know, we have the Thanksgiving Day Feed. We're one of the stations they use for the summer lunch program. Again, to Bill's point, there are children in this community that, believe it or not, as hard as it is to understand that that one lunch that they get at the Youth Center in the summertime might be the only decent meal that they get through the day. So to have all these outside organizations contribute, you know, from the Board of Selectmen, I want to send a big thank you, because it means a lot, you know. And, you know, one group of people we always have to keep in the forefront of our mind is Amy Leoni, and here a group of councilors that give so much of their time to this community, not just to the Youth Center, to this community, to try and help out. So, just wanted to say thank you. And Rick, thank you very much. Nice job.
Thank you.
Okay, old business. We have the Geriatric Authority rebonding. And, Rick, I'm going to let you give a little explanation on it.
Just quick background, Mr. Chairman. As the board remembers, in May, you did vote. This re-involved the proposed reimbursement of surplus bond proceeds from the Geriatric Capital Project to the Woodland School Capital Project. Finance Director explained why we were doing it and how we were doing it. At that time, the Geriatric trustees originally opted to have the funds transferred to them, basically to be available in not quite a one lump sum, but over a couple of months. By December, it was about $365,000. Trustees of the Geriatric Authority have now since met. They'd like to choose the second option that was proposed in Finance Director Taylor's memo to you, and again, in the memo tonight. The second option is to amortize the balance over the remaining life of the bond. It does promote a better long-term savings for the Geriatric Authority, as Zach pointed out in his memo, from an interest standpoint. It also benefits the town, and he has explained that in his memo. So, basically, I guess it would be a motion, if the board is so inclined, to amend the original agreement we did.
To rescind it, right?
Yeah, rescind, and then basically put the second option in place, as outlined in Zach's memo dated, I guess, the same memo, June 13th.
And if I may, gentlemen, in, I'm sorry, Rick, go ahead.
No, that's good. I'm done. Thank you.
In Zach's letter to us on the second page, "The benefit to the town would be providing an immediate short-term gain to the town in fiscal '19, local receipts estimations. Instead of a one-year $365,000 reduction to local revenue, there would be an approximate $25,000 per year adjustment that would progressively decrease each year over the life of the bond. Attached, please find the amortization schedule showing the corresponding principles and interests." And he goes on to say, "It is my recommendation that the town reconsider the request of the Board of Selectmen to amend the agreement executed May 23rd."
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you know, we were meeting the request of the chairman of the Geriatric at the time, with essentially a lump sum. And to me, it didn't make a lot of sense unless there was something they needed to do to use that money this year. So, you know, I understand it. They changed their mind. I just want to make sure that folks understand that. We met their original request when we voted in May.
Right.
And I'm happy to make a motion to use a amortized schedule, as outlined by the Finance Director. I'd make that motion, and have that schedule, and payments made to the Geriatric Authority, consistent with Zachary Taylor, the Finance Director's memo of June 13, 2018.
I'll second that.
And I'll make it that unanimous.
Thank you.
Next agenda under Old Business is the Town Administrator's recommendation for a new assistant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The position of Administrative Assistant to the Town Administrator was advertised in the Milford Daily News, posted on the town website. We received 48 applications for the position. Basically, I did review in detail all 48 on a few occasions. Selected five candidates to be interviewed. I actually only conducted three interviews. One of them, one candidate had found another job, and one was not quite satisfied with the salary structure. I did then complete the interviews. I do have a recommendation, if the board is willing to consider it. And that recommendation would be Danelli Marias Fonseca. This is based on her resume, her experience, and most importantly, her interview. Is looking at her resume. She worked as an office manager in the Inspection Services Division for the town of Framingham. She also, prior to that, was an administrative assistant in that department, and prior to that was an office clerk in the Framingham Assessors' Office. So she made her way through different promotions. She has supervised clerical staff. She's provided service to the public at all these positions. She does have some experience administering alcohol and building permits. She also has extensive experience in cash management, payroll processing, and accounts payable. As the board knows, one of the functions that Jean does so well, among many, is the accounts payable function. She's currently using and is familiar with the Munis software program. And as an added bonus, she is fluent in both Portuguese and Spanish. But mainly, based on her interview, I think that she would fit well into the position. There would be some learning, a learning curve, for anybody who comes into this position, unfortunately.
Even if you worked in another municipality, there's learning.
There's still. I mean, I'm not going to tell you she can come in and do everything. But I think the learning curve for her would be less than any of the other resumes that I looked at in people that I interviewed. So, that's for the board's consideration. That's about all I have.
Yeah, just thinking, when would be the first opportunity we could conduct our interviews?
Want to put it on the next agenda?
I'm a little concerned about that, because by the time she started, I wouldn't have... I want some overlap with Jean, and we talked about that last time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This young lady's been a finalist for positions before in Milford.
She has, yeah, correct.
I don't know each other at all, but I know of her. She's got a really good reputation. And I'm very pleased that she speaks multiple languages. I think that's quite a compliment to the Town Hall. I was a little concerned about the schedule, but at the same time, I wanted to meet her as well, because we spoke about things that were important to the board. Because even though I put the vast majority of this hire on Rick, because he has to work with this individual, I think it's also important, though, that as the Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectmen, that she at least sees us at some point, and even if it's five minutes. What I was going to recommend, so we don't lose a lot of time, is either we have a special meeting with Daniele, or, Rick, if you want to schedule one-on-ones with each of us, I will certainly make myself available, just so in 10 or 15 minutes, she knows what's important to me, and my priorities, and things that we talked about at a meeting, and, you know, welcome her aboard, and...
And then we, from that, that's a great suggestion. Well, from that, we'd know whether we want to go deeper into the pool candidates, or we're prepared to make, you know, motions. We'd all know that, and could meet.
Yeah, whether it's together or individual, we could at least give feedback back to Rick and say, "I'm comfortable."
We probably should try to meet together. That way, if we're happy with the candidate, we can make the motion, take the vote.
We oppose that.
Yeah, and we'd have to post it.
Well, I mean, I could set something up as early as Thursday if the board's...
I can do that. I don't know if the other candidate would agree with that.
I think I got you, yeah.
Just suggesting.
No, because again, one thing that was important to us was the overlap with Jean. So, we can't...
I think that's key for anybody.
We can't do that either. So we have to try to figure it out.
Big shoes to fill.
Yeah, no question. Could I suggest 6:00 on Thursday, or later, depends?
No, that works. That works for me.
No, I don't know.
I'm good. I'm good.
Will?
Nope, I know right now.
Okay, let me do this. Let me confirm with her, and then I'll confirm with you gentlemen.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you. Okay, the next item under Old Business is review of the possible action upon Dennis Carroll's status as a member of the Personnel Board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I reached out, and I know we all got different, probably different correspondences from us reaching out to our Town Council. But on the advice of the Town Council for remediating the open meeting law, I do have a couple of motions to make. The first, we'd make a motion to rescind the motion to remove Dennis Carroll from the Personnel Board.
We already did that at the last meeting.
No, we didn't rescind. We...
Oh, not according to the minutes. I just want to make sure you, this is done right.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is from the Town Council.
Okay.
Yeah, and Town Council, I'd be happy to second for discussion that motion. Town Council, in its response to the open meeting law claim, indicated that it was his opinion that what the board did was both posted and legal, having done it under appointments and reappointments. But his suggestion that, out of an abundance of caution, any potential question could be removed through this, this item on the agenda?
My first motion is to make a motion to rescind the motion to remove Dennis Carroll from the Personnel Board.
So, yeah, I've seconded for discussion. I'm happy to second that, and to follow the Town Council's guidance.
Right. I make that unanimous. I got the same, I got the same information.
Well, the second half is now that this topic has been... Well, the second half is now that this topic has been placed on the agenda specifically, I want this board to support its original motion, and I do make a motion that we remove Dennis Carroll from the Personnel Board.
And I'd second that.
And I will not support that. I will take the same stance as I did at the original meeting. I don't think that it's warranted, and therefore, I will not vote in favor of that.
Okay.
So is that, what's the vote count?
So that's a vote.
Two in favor, one opposed.
I'm just waiting for the chair to call that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, next agenda item, new business. We have a reappointment to the Retirement Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint to the Retirement Board Michael Diorio, with the term expiring, I'm sorry, it would be for three years, so it would be 6/30/21. Is that right?
Yes.
No, I'll gladly second that.
And I'll make that unanimous. Next is a one-day permit for the Italian Vets for the Plains Reunion Committee.
Make a motion to approve that, Mr. Chairman, great program.
I'll second that.
And I will make that unanimous as well. Town Administrators, for recommendation on the date for the special town meeting?
I move that we set the special town meeting for Monday, October 15, 2018, and make the appropriate announcements as outlined in Amy's memo.
And we're making that specifically at 7:00 PM.
7:00, it's...
It's finally, it's finally gonna happen.
Yes, 7:00.
Okay, I'll second that.
Good point.
7:00.
And I'll make that unanimous. And the last item under new business is the Town Administration's, Town Administrator's recommendation for the Labor Council appointment.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, just, there were one, two, nine, either attorney-law firms that made a fee proposal in response to the RFP that was put in Lawyers Weekly. I provide you a brief memo outlining the firm and the fee proposal. I wanted to get those before you tonight, if you were to take action. I hope we can take action, if not tonight, within the next two weeks, because there are a couple of unions, at least one union that needs to get going, namely, the library.
Yeah.
And this person would be servicing, as you know, three unions, which would be library, clerks, and, I'm drawing a blank.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Highway and parks, excuse me.
If I can, whether or not it's decided tonight or in two weeks, I spent a lot of time going through these, and I will say that our local attorney, Mr. Patrick Holland, presented something that most, if not very closely, resembles what our labor, our Labor Council, Ernie Pettenari, presented, where he got a flat fee for X amount of, a flat fee per month, which added up to $9,600. When you look at the hourly rates going from anywhere from $190 to $250, or to be negotiated, that equals 40 hours of work per year after you beat Attorney Holland's proposal. I think, obviously, I'm biased, I think all three of us know him, we've certainly have all served with him, from some, a long generation of attorneys in this town, and he's on Main Street. So, I just want, if we make that tonight, that'd be great, I'm certainly willing to make a motion, but if you did your homework and you went through everything, we are gonna spend far more than $9,600 a year on every one of these other law firms coming out. They broke it down to prices for emails, phone calls, billing on one-tenth per hour at a time, and if you start doing the math, we are gonna spend far more than $9,600, and at that point, we should be hiring a full-time assistant town council, which I don't think anyone is looking to do. So, I would like to see, again, attorney who's local, we had Ernie Pettenari for 30-some-odd years. I know him in this position, when I was chairman of the Milford School Committee, we had one of the biggest personnel issues this town has ever faced, and Jerry was on an extended vacation, and I spoke with Ernie, who made himself available every day for almost three weeks. So, I think we need to have a Labor Council/Assistant Town Council, and I certainly support our local attorney, rather than hiring a firm outside of town at some of these rates that have been presented.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, Rick, how do we budget? I mean, if it, if it weren't a flat fee, which, when you look at the wisdom of the Board of Selectmen 30 years ago, they flat-fee'd that thing, and actually, it made sense, right? Because when you look at what attorneys can charge in billable hours, you end up with one protracted negotiation.
From a budget standpoint, no question, that's easier, because I would have to...
We're used to paying for negotiations, for services, for services by an attorney, to negotiate budgets on a flat-fee basis. We budgeted that for years, I think we still have it in our budget, because we could have...
It is still in the budget.
It's still there. So this is, this is in budget. I'm just, you know, curious, you know, Mike, what your thinking is, because I don't know how we can afford some of those.
I think what's important for me is, and I'm gonna back up to the meeting where the chief brought in the new recruits from the Police Department, and he talked about how every single one of those new police officers lived in Milford, except for one, and he had just left.
Yeah, that's right.
And bought a house in Bellingham.
Yeah.
But the chief talked about the culture. And when I got this packet from Rick, and I went through it, and I said, you know, what are these law firms, or what are these attorneys that aren't from Milford, gonna understand about our culture? And when I talk about the culture of Milford all the time, I don't, I'm not talking about the culture in a bad way. You've gotta understand the community, and, and, you know, the, to represent the unions that this person is gonna be responsible for, it is gonna be advantageous and to our benefit that that person is somebody who lives in the community, a major plus works in the community. I served on the school committee with him for six years. We didn't always agree, but we always made decisions that we felt were in the best interest of the schools, and I think that he'll do the same thing, working with the departments or the unions that has to deal with. I think, to Will, to your point, he comes from a long line of attorneys. He's got six years of experience, you know, it's not a lot of experience, but he's got six years, and I think he'll, I think he'll do a good job. And my recommendation would also be, having gone through all of the applications, looked at them all, I feel that Pat is, in my personal opinion, for the Town of Milford, the best choice.
Then if I could, Mike, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Attorney Patrick Holland as the Labor Council for the Town of Milford.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous.
Start him August 1st, right?
Yeah, whenever you want.
As fast as we possibly can.
Yeah.
Charles needs assistance? We gotta get those labor contracts going.
We gotta get it going.
There's a lot to do here, and there's a lot of executive sessions for us in meeting with these Labor Council attorneys, to make sure we put together the right package for both the community and the employees.
Okay, thank you.
With that, next agenda item is any correspondence? Does anybody have any correspondence?
No correspondence.
I don't.
And neither do I, and with that, I will say, "Good night, everybody, thank you very much."
I'll move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
And I will make that unanimous, and have a nice week.